All right, tonight is Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. This is the Committee of the Whole Meeting at Blythe Park Elementary. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Mr. Sliber?
Here.
Mr. Barhol?
Here.
Mr. Marha?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
All right, first item on the agenda is Welcome to Blythe Park School by Principal Casimir Norman.
Good evening, board members. Welcome to Blythe Park. It's good to see you here. A couple of highlights that have been happening recently at Blythe Park. One is that we had our monthly all-school meeting here just last Friday. That's when all staff and students gather to have just a half an hour of like just togetherness. We usually use that time to highlight the specific character trait that we've been working on with the students that month. This past month in November was integrity. And I was talking to Martha earlier, and she's like, how do they understand integrity? And so for our students, we explain integrity to them as doing the right thing even when it's hard or when no one's looking, you know? And so we were trying to kind of catch kids when they were just naturally, you know, being kind and generous and helpful, and those students that showed that most consistently were celebrated. We also then introduced in our all-school meeting the character trait for the next month, and this month is empathy. And so we talked about the idea of like, you know, seeing through the eyes of someone or feeling with heart of someone, but that can be a little abstract. So we also showed an in-and-out clip from the movie In-N-Out, and we just talked to all the students about, you know, sometimes just sitting down and like listening to a friend when they're upset or they're sad, and just being there is a great way to show empathy. So that helps our younger students have a little bit more of a concrete example of like what it means to be empathic. Last week, we also had our final run of our Cardio Kids season for the fall. It's always our cocoa run. Of course, it was the coldest morning of the year thus far. And I was actually pleasantly surprised. We have about 50 kids that run the program, and there was about 35 kids that showed up. And it was like 18 degrees. But they were, there are some kids that are so motivated, they just love to start their day and they had to run. I do believe that some were motivated by the cookies and hot cocoa that we were serving afterward. But nonetheless, I was just proud of all of them. They did a really, really nice job. I think most kids that day ran anywhere from like a mile to a mile and a half. So it was great.
Wow.
And most of your student body participates, right?
Well, yeah, as it's grown, I think, you know, it's still, it always hovers around between like 50 to 70 participants. And then, and then sometimes lots of kids come in one session and then sometimes a few, a few less, and then parents will also come and join. So they'll either walk or they'll just hang around, right? And they'll just hang around the path and they'll talk and they'll chat while their children run. And it always happens before school, so it's kind of a nice way to start the day. The last thing I just want to share is just an academic piece. So for several years, the teachers and I have done a deep assessment analysis of students' writing, specifically their response to reading. And so we look carefully at how students are comparing and contrasting across various texts, and also how they're citing evidence to support their thinking. This practice, we do about two to three times per year. It really gives us a great insight into our students' strengths, but it also highlights areas of challenge or confusion for our students so that we can go back and think about teaching strategies and different ways to instruct and approach that part of the writing process to make that more manageable for the students. So this is like our first run of it, and we'll probably do two more runs throughout the rest of the school year. And I think that's about it, the full snapshot. Once again, thanks so much for being here this evening.
All right, thanks for having us. Okay, at this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. And are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
No.
All right, and that will take us to committee reports. First one listed is policy.
Okay, so just wanted to update the board. I think I've spoken to some folks individually. I had an opportunity to participate in the, God, I didn't realize it was called all these things. I just kept calling it the ISB Conference, but apparently ISA, ISBO Conference, November 19th weekend. So I really appreciated the opportunity to go on behalf of the board and also to serve as a delegate. So just kind of a quick update that I wanted to provide you all. A couple of the sessions that I attended that I found particularly helpful included, the first one was with Superintendent Carmen Ayala, who did kind of officially announce her retirement this January on the Equity Journey Continuum. And, you know, I think as everybody here is now familiar, the new tool kind of adopted recently in November of, well, it was adopted like November 2020 as part of ISB's strategic plan. And so that she just kind of walked through like, you know, kind of the purpose behind the Equity Journey Continuum, what an equity mindset is, the goals, and, you know, just reminding everybody, these aren't mandates, no mandates associated with these tools, right? Just public and transparent. And so it was just kind of more building awareness around it. There weren't as many like concrete like takeaways or kind of workshopping, but there are, as I'm sure Angela knows, a lot of resources online that depending on where you fall on the continuum, like things that you might consider doing. So if you're like at a certain step, step one, maybe you have large gaps in equity or moderate or small gap. So just helpful to note some of the resources that are out there. But otherwise, I just found it to be kind of higher level informative. One of the other sessions that I attended that I thought was really useful, and we've already kind of had some key takeaways that we were able to begin working on was through the Public Access Bureau, which is the Office of Attorney General, the Open Meetings Act, Understanding and Compliance. So it took like a very deep dive into OMA. It once again, just really for me reinforces how, you know, kind of tightly we really do adhere and understand OMA on this board. There were examples given that, you know, I thought were rather shocking, but actually happen among boards and other entities. So with this one, one of the things that came out of it was a recommendation for the appointment of an OMA designee, which would have annual training, different than incoming board members, which must have training within the first 90 days. So in speaking with Martha and who else did we talk to?
Ryan Crowley, our attorney.
You know, we will kind of begin to work towards having Martha be our OMA in an annual, OMA designee, and would undergo kind of the annual training is just sort of a best practice, this training offered through PAC. But yeah, I just really, again, took a deep dive into all things related to OMA, and it was a helpful reminder. I also had a chance to attend with Martha, what does EAB stand for? Education?
Something educational, it's like educational research, but their acronym doesn't really fit what they are.
Yeah, on preparing principals to lead, but a nice opportunity, of course, is to also interact with Martha during this session. But it was, again, I keep just saying the word interesting, but thinking about the types of support that principals might need and sort of core skills. They've developed this like 15 steps to developing highly effective leaders in every school using this like root cause analysis tool, this also notion of, you know, pairing principals with like business executives in the community, so this kind of like mentorship program to focus on peer conversations. So that pretty much took up the rest of the afternoon. I also got a chance to do some tips for successful board policy committee members. We commiserated that we think our boards, this is, everybody seemed to be the newest board member. We were like, is this like the hazing of every board? And I've got to say, I was really shocked, like again, I really appreciate and value how tight this board is on updating policies, reviewing policies, you know, ensuring that we have press, press plus. I was surprised by some of the districts in the room who admitted that they haven't touched their board policy book and they don't know how long.
Wow.
And/or don't have the press or press plus.
That would be hard.
Yeah, it really could be. And then we also talked about, as you know, I'm trying to put together like an, like a review, an ongoing review for us and their, the examples that this board has seen before. But there's actually a worksheet on their website where you can kind of like customize your own. So I met with some other reps to go through that. Just lastly, also, I, it was a really great opportunity just meet and interact with other board members and network, board members from like Broadview, Berwyn area. I mean, it seems to be something that a lot of the board members go to, so I'd highly encourage and love for more of us to be able to attend, not only for your own kind of professional development as a board member, but of course for being able to get to know each other outside of the board table. What else? I went to the DLA. DLA put on a really nice reception. They actually won an award for the work they did in the, is it Schiller Park, the Washington Elementary? Beautiful work that they did. But you could actually see a lot of like some pieces from like Ames and certainly I think what Blythe will be. So it was really exciting to see, but it gave me a better opportunity to meet with DLA, just more personal. And then last was the delegate, well, it didn't happen last, but the delegate assembly, there were 409 delegates in attendance. It was an interesting process to be a part of. I had a golden ticket, a pin that I had to, I was terrified this pin was going to fall off my lanyard for when, I was like, they're not going to let me in. But the delegate assembly, I mean, everything, I don't think there were any surprises. They voted on some ISB constitutional amendments, and then they went through the resolutions. They tried to do similar, a consent agenda where, you know, they recommend approval, people can remove it. So yeah, that was really, I mean, I have a list I can email out of like which ones were adopted. The one where we differed with ISBs or the resolution committee, it didn't actually come to the floor for a vote because the school district that proposed it did not file an appeal to the resolution committee saying no. So unless they file an appeal, kind of the decision stays as is. So we didn't even have an opportunity to sort of cast our vote on that when it didn't even come up on the floor. I don't know, it's probably the most I've spoken. Does anybody have questions or thoughts or?
Yeah, how was it? Sounds like it was worthwhile and a lot of good sessions.
Yeah, I would think that it was informative, again, just my own professional development as a board member, exposure to other board members, better understanding of, you know, I will say, at times it felt a little overwhelming, like I often attend conferences in my professional life. This conference was, I mean, now as I can see, it was like three conferences happening at any, at one time. So there were a lot of like tracks and just so many choices that it felt a little overwhelming. That would maybe be my only, the only negative, but I thought it was worthwhile of my time. And I took Friday off of work to attend the whole day, and hopefully, I think all of you hopefully agree of the district's resources for me to attend locally. But yeah, it was interesting to hear even in the delegate assembly, some of the challenges of perhaps some of the southern district schools feeling like they don't have as much representation at the delegate assembly, are unable to, you know, send people to Chicago for a weekend. A lot of talk about, you know, why can't we be casting votes now virtually and in other ways, just to get a better, better representation across the districts in our state. But yeah, so I don't know, I guess save the date for that Saturday before Thanksgiving next year.
I've got it, I better put it on my calendar now.
So I've tried to go to this a couple of times and something always comes up, so I definitely...
It's always this hard weekend.
Yeah, I need to put it, I need to put it on my calendar now. So what was the date?
What was the date for next year?
I don't, no, I don't think there was like a formal announcement, but it's typically that Saturday before Thanksgiving, the 19th, 18th, whatever the date was.
But I could see if there's a district that's seven hours away from Chicago, I mean, it's a big commitment for someone to come up.
Yeah, but even like even a lot of local districts who live the same 13 miles west were staying at the Hyatt for the two nights. Yeah, so it was like, no, I'm going to go home. But yeah, I mean, a lot of, a lot of board members attend, so I, again, appreciated the opportunity, would love to have more board members attend next year. And I appreciated being the delegate.
Was it valuable enough that you think you'd attend next year?
Yep, yes. I mean, I think it was valuable, like I wish it was, I was talking to Martha a little, I mean, it felt a little kind of high level as opposed to really kind of getting super salient little takeaways that you could begin implementing immediately perhaps, but it was, I think, overall useful. I could certainly see it being that, especially for new board members. But again, there's so many tracks, like this is what appealed to me, but maybe somebody who's been on a board for longer might have gravitated to other types of, you know, workshops or things that were, you know, sessions that were happening. So I think there's something for everyone, whatever role you kind of have on the board, however long you've been on it, or interests of your district. I don't know, Martha, if you had anything to add about our afternoon together?
I mean, I would agree, it's a huge conference. It does feel a bit overwhelming, same thing. I go to a number of conferences, there's a lot going on, it's hard to make the choices. I did a half-day session on supporting great principals, and Stephanie joined me for that, and that was, it was nice for us to just have lunch together and kind of have some time to chat before the workshop started, I think during breaks, et cetera. So I know that from a superintendent perspective, it's really often the opportunity to connect with board away from the board table, and that can be very valuable. I thought you did a great job giving the overview. So thank you for giving your time to be there, but also for the overview tonight. And I was just looking ahead, it looks like it would probably be November 17, next, 17 to 18th, just trying to use the formula. Looked up Thanksgiving as the 23rd.
Generally that weekend before Thanksgiving.
It's certainly something to think about if there's...
I gotta put it on my calendar now, I keep having conflicts.
It's always a busy time of year, for sure.
I mean, I think that's all I had on the conference, and then the policy committee will be meeting next week.
We'll meet tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Or not the committee, just Stephanie, our meeting to plan for the committee of the whole policy component, yeah.
And then press, we just attended a Zoom webinar yesterday on the most recent press 110 bundle that came out, so more to come on that.
No, it's not tomorrow.
No, sorry.
You were right, it's Tuesday, December 13th, that you and I are going to meet.
December's a pretty dense month.
Yes.
Anything else for me?
Nope.
Yeah, thanks for the information. All right, go ahead.
I added it. I'm not committing, but I added it.
All right, sounds good.
I got it blocked.
I gotta do that after. All right, so next up on the agenda is the education committee.
Well, we, well, Angela did all the work last time hearing about, you know, science curriculum and how we're going to approach what we do, but now it's going to be a little more specific. So we'll let Angela talk because she has all the good information. The smart equals, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to start by talking just about science and giving you an update on where we're at with the science committee. Been doing a lot of great work with our science team, which is comprised of nine teachers representing kindergarten through fifth grade, represents all four schools. We actually met this morning and talked about, we wrapped up our work with defined learning professional development, and we talked about how it went over the past three months, the good, the bad, the ugly, the down and dirty. And we had a lot of great discussion this morning. Some of the great things about defined learning is that it's engaging. A lot of our teachers saw a lot of great collaboration happening. So when we started this process in October, our teachers were concerned about having collaborative projects in the class. Coming off of the pandemic, we know SEL is a concern, and how students partner and work together is something we were still, we are still working on, we continue to work on. And some of the classes even had SEL concerns in their classrooms, and so they were just like, I don't think my kids can do this, we're not going to do it. It ended up that the majority of them did try collaborative projects, and they did have their kids work in groups of two or three, and they raved about it this morning. They just talked about how great it was, how the kids were so engaged. You know, even one of our kindergarten teachers who's on the committee talked about how during some times our kindergarten kids are struggling to just deal with regular SEL day-to-day life, but that they were able to work together in partnerships to talk about seasons and to talk about what different kind of clothing represent different seasons. So it was great for me to hear that they jumped in and tried, and I acknowledge that, really appreciate it, and just that they rose to that occasion and set the bar high for their students who also rose to that occasion. The teachers really enjoyed the creativity of defined learnings projects, and that it allows for multiple modalities, as well as all their scenarios were real-world topics. So kindergarten, as I said, did seasons, first grade talked about instruments and vibration, they made instruments, some of them made drums, and were very proud of those drums. So if you have it, if someone has a kindergartner, you might have seen that come home. Kindergarten for second grade talked about architecture and designing classrooms based off of needs, so what kind of materials would you use for flexible classrooms, flexible seating? Third grade talked about bees and why they're important. And then fourth grade did ideology, study, talked about audiologists and their jobs and hearing. And then fifth grade designed an aquarium. So those were the projects that we did, and that incorporated volume and looking at different types of fish that can live together in aquarium, and different plants and food they need to eat. And they were also supposed to do a cost analysis, but that got a little bit above our fifth graders' heads, and so we also talked about then, what would we do differently if we were going to do these projects again, and talked a little bit about that. So then after we talked about the great things about defined learning, we did talk about what are the challenges? And so some of the challenges are that they had to do a lot of front-loading of teaching the different concepts. Defined learning has talked about it being a supplemental program, and when we started the professional learning, the person that was leading our professional learning had said that it's not really a supplemental program, it can be a core curriculum, but as we really worked with it, it's supplemental. The teachers had to go and find resources, find books, the first grade teachers had to find books about different, or the kindergarten teachers had to find kindergarten-level books about different seasons and helping to explain to kids, five-year-olds, what seasons are, right? Our younger kids, and I hadn't really thought about this myself, associate seasons with like holidays, so Christmas, winter, Valentine's Day, winter, Fourth of July, summer. And so it was trying to help them understand, nope, there's more to seasons than just like the holidays that we're encountering during them. And so they had to find the resources to teach that because it wasn't part of defined learning, and the same with the other projects I mentioned. So that was hard, and it took a lot of time. The defined learning projects are not aligned, so should we go with defined learning, we'll have to spend time working on a scope and sequence and alignment so that we have vertical alignment and consistency then across grade levels in schools. The platform's a little bit difficult to navigate. Teachers wanted to edit certain things, provide rubrics for students, and they weren't able to. And defined learning has plans to correct that, but Jordan couldn't tell us exactly when that's coming out and when that will happen. And then it really isn't geared towards our youngest kids. We really tried to work around that, see how we can make things happen, but it took a lot more planning on our primary teacher's parts than our intermediate teacher's parts. So when we were done talking about what worked, what didn't work, and what we'd like to see in a program, we did decide that we are going to look, starting in January, at additional science resources. And as we look at additional science resources, some of the things that we want to make sure are covered are, one, that's aligned to the next generation science standards, the NGSS standards. We want to make sure that it has real-world connections, we really appreciate that about defined learning. I was on Cloud Nine when they said, the teacher said, we want to make sure it incorporates STEAM, because I was going to put that in there if they didn't say it, but they said it, so it's great. They want to make sure it's engaging and hands-on, that we have a clear scope and sequence, and that the resources and lessons are laid out and in a logical order. And then they also said that it has some type of assessment to ensure the students are learning the concepts that are happening, and that it addresses a range of needs, including our bilingual students, which is something that we also found was missing with defined learning. So we have a, we have a path, we know what we're looking for, and we'll start that in January. In the meantime, I've been reaching out to other Whiskey districts to see what they utilize in science, and it's a hodgepodge of stuff happening across all districts, from teacher-created materials in some districts to resources that districts are using that they know they want to change because it hasn't been working, but because of the pandemic, they haven't had a chance to focus on it. Everybody's emails back to me have said, this is something we need to work on, but we haven't had a chance. So we're all in the same boat, we're all working on it, but Riverside's just working on, I think, a little bit sooner than some others. And that's not because we're ahead of the game, it's just our priorities are a little bit different. Other districts are focused on something else, we just did math, there are some districts working on math now. So it's not that we're ahead of the game, we just all have different, we've ordered things in different fashion.
And that was Whiskey District, the local, I forget how many schools it is in the local area again?
Fifteen, West Suburban Contortion for Academic Excellence, yeah.
So that's where we're at with science. I'm looking forward to starting the down and dirty work in January with the team, and I will continue to keep you updated. Do you have any science questions for me?
I was going to ask, you know, I haven't, I'm more affiliated with the nine to 12 standards, but are the NGSS standards for youngsters, do they give any leeway for teams to design, not that designing your own thing is easy, it's a lot of work, but if the teachers wanted, had a preference, like somebody in their group or a bunch of them had this affinity for plants and they loved something, could they fit that in, or is it very specific, we have to do the aquarium, we have to do...
No, it's very, it's loosely based. So some of the, I'm trying to think of the standards that we were addressing, it wasn't really about aquarium building, that was a project that fit the standard. The standard was about incorporating volume in a design to impact a habitat.
Gotcha, so it's more about the actual, you know, what's going behind the scenes instruction? Okay, that's good to hear in a way, but I don't want to, I wouldn't want a team to struggle with, what do we do, you know, if you can find a curriculum obviously that fits all those things.
Teams are going to say, let's build it, build it from the ground up.
No, I was just saying, once in a blue moon you'll get a team that's really excited, you know, we have a garden, we want to do this, you know, like Blythe has a beautiful garden, what would we?
And that is where defined learning started. That was the initial plan, is that we built lessons, we put them in the defined learning platform, and we'd have these lessons at every grade level, but the pandemic kind of threw that plan off the rails.
And I think it was several years ago, I think when defined learning came about, is that, if you might recall, that there were teachers that were writing units of science, units of study at West 40, our regional office, had kind of organized teachers into like, you know, cross-district groups. It was a great idea, but I think it became a lot of planning and a lot of curriculum writing.
Oh, it's a lot of work.
And a lot of professional development that needs happening.
And a lot of teachers will write in the summer, and it's a tremendous amount of work. And sometimes it seems like it gets on, how do you do that cross-curriculum horizontal alignment as well, that everyone is doing similar things, that we have schools that have sort of a reasonable approach? So yeah, if you can find a curriculum in good light, you know, hope you'll find something awesome too to look at, it's tricky, you never know what's out there, and thanks for doing all that.
And it may not be like math, where we adopted a three-year series, like we adopt our series for three years, it might be something where we start for a year or two and see how it's working and adjust as needed, right? So we'll come back to the table with those thoughts and where we're at with that. You might have already said this, and I just didn't hear, how many curriculums are you like piloting in the fall, or in the, not the fall, the fall's over, in the spring, winter, spring? I didn't say it, because we're still finalizing that. I am talking with a couple more curriculum directors in other districts to pull the ones that I'll bring to the team. It won't be more than five, that will start with analyzing, and then from there narrowing it down to one, no more than two. Thank you, yeah, okay.
If you find that those do not work well for younger students, are you considering a K to two separate version and a three to five?
That's always in the back of my head with any curricular resource review we do.
I don't know, I don't know the answer, yeah.
Yeah, so it's always in the back of my head. Is it my ideal? No, would like to keep one resource from K through five, but if it's not meeting the needs, then we would look at how we need to separate it out.
Well, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Exciting, though?
It is.
How different are the NGSS standards from what we're doing now?
So what we're doing now is based loosely off the NGSS standards. The science units that are happening in different classrooms were developed based off of NGSS, based off of, it's from the time that defined learning had first started coming about. The situation we have going on right now is that we're not consistent from grade to grade, from school to school, from even class to class at our larger schools. So that's where, you know, like some second-grade teachers might be doing, one or two second-grade teachers might be doing one type of science unit, another one might do something different. They're all aligned to NGSS loosely, but there's just no consistency.
And it's difficult if there are, I don't want to say lacking, but if there are... And it's difficult if there are, I don't want to say lacking, but if there are certain people that have content areas specialties or endorsements, they're going to have an advantage in their classroom, as opposed to someone that has a different kind of endorsement that might be English-related or something else. So it creates a strange kind of atmosphere, I guess, or landscape, to keep them all on the same page. Because it's not like in high school, where you have, I'm the biology person, I'm certified in biology. This is much more broad, and like, in a way, it's neat, because there's so open to concepts, but I think it's hard to get the staff. It's not their fault either, it's that they have so many awesome specialties.
It is. And again, the pandemic just kind of threw everything for a loop. Once we started hybrid remote learning, science was asynchronous, so it was what can we make happen in an asynchronous fashion? And then we came back, and it just, we added new staff members, we haven't had training in NGSS, and so it's just, that's where the lack of consistency. And if you are a science-background person, your class is going to look different than a math-background or a reading-background elementary teacher, just because of the way that happens.
All right. Well, thank you, that's a big project.
Definitely sounds that way.
And I think I have the next topic also.
Yes.
Yes.
So you have received updated KPIs for Goal One. There were a couple of KPIs that had asterisks in them, because we were still looking at the baseline data. One of them was the IAR assessment, and we were looking at, waiting for the Spring '22 proficiency percentages, so that I could look at the trends to see where we were at to set a realistic goal. And so now, you'll see that both math and ELA are set at 64% of students will meet or exceed the grade-level expectations for each subject. And that number comes about at looking at the trends. So in, for both of those, that's a 10% increase for both math and ELA. We had, we're at 54.9 in ELA in the Spring of '22, and 54.2 for math. So it's about a 10% increase for both subject areas. It would put our math percentage of students meeting or exceeding above where we were pre-pandemic, just slightly above. Pre-pandemic, our highest score was in 2000, it was the school year of 2018, which was 61 and five tenths. So that 64% will put us above that. It will put us slightly below where we were in the 2017-18 school year for ELA. And that's because we have a 13.5% difference between where we were pre-pandemic and where we were Spring of '22. And it wasn't realistic to try to jump that, so we'll continue to work towards that growth. 64% is achievable. It is an increase of slightly over 100 students total, which is about, on average, about 20 students per grade level, 20 to 22 students per grade level. So it's achievable, it's a stretch, but it's definitely an achievable stretch goal.
And by saying 10%, that does sound a tad bit arbitrary. Is there, you know, a reason why we're doing increments of 10, or?
So when I looked at, how many students is 10%? How many students would, seven, eight? I played with different numbers to see, look and see what's achievable when we look at it. So it's more that I was looking at the number of students. And when I looked at that number, I looked at our outgoing eighth graders, and how many of them met and exceeded the standards, because then our incoming third graders have to make up for that chunk of kids. Looking at that piece, looking at numbers of students each percentage equated to, that's where I ended up coming up with 10%. And then, placement in high school math courses. The difference here is that we've broken it up to percentage of students who completed the mathematics eight class in District 96 will achieve a level of success on placement exam, so that they are placed into honors algebra at Riverside Brookfield High School. And then, a percentage of students who complete advanced math eight in District 96 will achieve a level of success on the high school placement exam, so that they are placed into honors geometry. The only thing here is that there's still asterisks here, because we're going to use this year's numbers to set the baseline. So it's not something we have tracked in the past, or we've looked at in the past. So we don't have baseline numbers that we were recording from the past, so we'll start with this year's numbers, and then work towards a goal that will be set in the KPIs once we have those numbers. And then, on the original KPIs, I believe we had only focused on placement in high school math courses. But in conversations as leadership team, as gold champions, as strategic plan team, action team, we realized that we should also include our high school English courses. So now, you'll see Goal 1.5A and 1.5B that is laid out the same as the math goal. And again, has the asterisks, because we're looking to set, use this year's numbers for our baseline. Any KPI questions?
Are you still working with 208 to facilitate whether doing well, what that means at RB and other, you know what I mean? Once they get there, what does that mean? And how many students is that? Because you have to get continuous.
So it's an amount of data for them, you know, from them.
It is a continuous conversation, and what we're starting with is placement first, and then if we move into wanting to know other pieces of data, Martha and I will work with their administrative team for, to develop an agreement, so that we can share that data.
Yeah, I would imagine placement is probably 90% of the goal, and I would imagine they do reasonably well. It would be interesting to see how they fare throughout. But I haven't heard anything, I have a student at RB, I think they do very well, is what I've heard, but, thank you. It's always good to know, you know, because we do allow them to do that extra work in eighth grade, and I think that's been a really good thing.
Yes, absolutely.
And to give it as many people as we can, you know, that we may not have caught before.
Right.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had to think.
Were you typing that all the time with questions?
No, 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 no. No, I was taking notes, I was feeling the details. So IAR and MAP. So MAP, we've got, we talked about that last time, we have growth, which is just how much you grew. We had that whole conversation around, they grew a lot, but they're still not at expectations, right? So we've got a growth goal for NWEA MAP in, I guess, the second bullet. So IAR exceed, meet or exceed grade-level ELA math expectations. Can you help just translate what that means compared to the conversation we just had with the MAP?
Yes. So MAP is looking at growth, and is not looking at proficiency of how many people are actually meeting the target for their grade level. It's how are we growing? Are we growing at a higher percentage so we can get to that target? But what we're measuring for the KPI is their growth. As a district, we measure both. As a district, we look at both, but for the KPIs, we're looking at growth. Then for MAP, we're looking at proficiency. We could look at growth for MAP, but we know that we want to see our MAP scores reach pre-pandemic and beyond levels. So we're looking at proficiency for IAR, which is looking at how many kids are meeting that grade-level target.
Okay. So MAP is growth. So MAP also measures proficiency, but we don't look at that number, we look at that more for growth, and then IAR is actually proficiency?
For the KPIs, yes.
Right, okay. So is there a reason why we like IAR proficiency more than MAP proficiency?
There's a reason why we like MAP growth more than IAR growth, so MAP.
Oh, so they both measure growth and proficiency?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're taking growth from one and proficiency from the other.
Yes. MAP, we give three times a year, so it's easier to see. In the winter, we'll get a growth score, we'll see how they're working towards their projected year growth. We'll get that halfway mark with MAP. So we can then see, we're on track, we're not on track, here's how we adjust, or here's what we keep doing. IAR, because it's just a test we give once a year, and get the results after the test has been, like, months after the test has been given, we, impacting the growth piece is a little bit harder. So it's, we look at the proficiency piece, because that's that one-time score.
Yeah. Okay. And that's in the spring, so by the end of that grade level, you should be at that proficiency level. Yeah, okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Where are you looking? Thank you.
Thanks.
There's a second facet of SEL coming.
Yeah. I have a progress report update, yeah, from Nora.
And I will be efficient, I don't know how much water you have left in your.
Want me to refill?
I don't have any hydrating on my watch. So I just wanted to share an update about the district's progress on Goal Two in our strategic plan. Actually, we had an SEL action team meeting last night after school, and there were over 20 people there, super engaged, after a long day in that most magical time of the school year, between Thanksgiving and winter break. But as the newest member of the team, it was just really impressive to me, to see the commitment and the energy that they brought to this work, to making sure that we're meeting all of our, the needs of our students. I'm sure they're all watching at home, watching me brag about them, but I just thought it was, especially since I was coming here to tell you all about them and the work that they're doing, I just wanted to start by saying, as we go through the work that's been done since our last update, there's a lot of people behind it, so I'm very appreciative of that. So, taking us a little bit further back in time, though, after our last update, what's happened since then? On October 11th, we had our institute day. All of our certified special ed staff participated in, and our instructional assistants participated in training in crisis prevention intervention from LADZI that has two purposes. One, it meets the state requirement that we have professionals trained in each building to handle those crisis events in the event that they happen. But much of the day actually focuses on that verbal de-escalation, preventative practices, restorative practices, kind of setting the stage for success, rather than just the reaction to it. Our building principals, many of our building principals and some additional non-special ed building staff are signed up to participate in that training at LADZI in coming months as well. In mid to late October, we expanded our window a little bit to make sure everyone got a chance to do it, but grades two through eight were administered the PAST screener, the social emotional screener, for the first time. We, Pam and I have met with social workers to review the data, and we'll meet with a school psychologist in the week after next, to continue to kind of unpack that data and look at the validity of it. But overall, the results were positive across the district. The first result we got back before we even got the report was the result that it didn't, was not arduous to administer, there were no tech issues, it was 20 minutes, it did not take a lot out of the school day, did not stress the teachers, which is not something that you can always count on with a new process, so that was a success. But then, the results themselves were positive. So the PAST results are reported in terms of student satisfaction, student levels of satisfaction across nine domains. And they can be either high, moderate, low moderate, or low. Of those nine domains, none were at low, low moderate, or moderate levels of satisfaction at the district level or at any of the building levels. Which, if we had seen that, would have been like an immediate, like, okay, we need to, like, address this right now, and really look at, you know, kind of a global response. So that was a promising start. And then, there were some subgroups in this first administration, you know, some specific grades or within a building, or genders, or subgroups of students that had areas, some of the nine domains that were not rated high satisfaction, but no subgroup had more than two domains that were low or low moderate. So even when they weren't high across all nine, there were no, that were concerning and really displaying kind of global levels of disconnection and lack of confidence in themselves as learners. So, you know, as I said, we're continuing to unpack this a little bit, and looking forward to our next administration in March, which will give us those two data points that you kind of need to really understand the scope of performance, right? See, at the end of the day, it is a snapshot, it is one moment in time, 20 minutes in time, that we're asking the students these questions, it was their first time participating in it. But in terms of, at the student level, too, just one more statement is that it did capture some of the students that we had already knew about, were already receiving support from the social worker, that we anticipated that they might score higher. And it also did identify some students who had some lower levels of satisfaction that weren't on anyone's radar. And so, again, that's been useful in terms of continuing to emphasize the importance of building in those, you know, emotionally supportive classroom practices as just a part of teachers' days, which goes back to that responsive classroom framework that we're looking at across the district. So the next, the next piece I'd like to talk about then, related to that responsive classroom piece, is the November 7, 75-minute professional development that was SEL-focused. So, again, that some members of the team that I was singing the praises of earlier joined the building principals and Pam and myself to put this PD together. It really looked at, you know, it was a carryover from the September professional development, where they had, each teacher had been charged with picking one of four responsive classroom strategies, diving into a little deeper, taking it back to their classroom, and implementing it with the knowledge that we'd come back together as a group in November to talk about it. So we started with that. We spent time talking about the CASL competencies, and how they kind of line up with the responsive classroom, academic competencies and social competencies. And then, we, the staff in their buildings, this was all done at the building level, watched a four-minute video about the morning meeting, which is one of the components of responsive classroom. And then had time in their grade-level groups to pick an upcoming unit of study and design a morning meeting that would bring in some of those content pieces into that kind of more social-emotional start to the day. And design it together, put them into shared folders so that they can use it, and take it back to their classrooms, and implement it in the next, you know, coming weeks. Staff also got rubrics about some of these responsive classroom strategies, so that they can kind of check for themselves, like, what are the components I'm supposed to be thinking about when I'm, you know, doing modeling for my students, or, you know, engaging in this practice? And then, resources specifically for morning meetings were also provided to all the buildings, so some books from responsive classrooms that are available to all the staff as well. The final piece of that PD was then at our district leadership team, we did look at the results of the survey they take, you know, at the end of that 75 minutes. Feedback was generally positive. There was appreciation for the time that they had to create something and then be able to use it in their classroom. That idea of having something concrete, a practice to try out, a tool to take back was appreciated. There was, as we anticipated, there, you know, there were some comments about people who weren't classroom teachers, and it's not as directly aligned, but the flip side of that is, we also had comments from teachers who are not necessarily classroom teachers, saying, it was just kind of neat to be able to collaborate with my colleagues and see what's happening in their classrooms. So generally positive feedback about that. What's next? Oh, the, on October 27th, the, another large group, mostly made up of SEL action team members, but also some faculty from all five buildings, who are just interested in this step that we're taking, met to review and hear from four vendors of social-emotional learning curricula. Each of them, each of the people who were listening to these presentations, completed a rubric, looking at how does the curriculum, you know, align to our strategic plan? How is it representative of our community? How does it meet the needs for adult SEL learning, as well as student learning? How accessible is it for teachers? How much time is needed for administration during the day? All these different aspects of the program. After hearing from all the presentations, doing debrief with the group, two of the systems, by five, and second step, the digital version, rated consistently higher. And so, part of our work last night in our meeting was starting to talk about the scope of that pilot in the spring semester, so starting in January, with the goal being that by the end of this school year, we'd be able to say what SEL curricula we'd like to move forward with for the coming school year. So, that discussion last night with the teachers was extremely informative in terms of their feedback. terms of their feedback about what they felt was necessary in terms of teacher support if they're going to be taking on this pilot program, in terms of time to meet with each other. They were pretty insistent that they would, if they were a piloting teacher, they'd want to try both instead of having one group try one and one group try another. So it was, again, just great work that the team did last night to put that together. So that's our, one of the upcoming things that we have on tap for, starting in January, is that SEL curriculum pilot. Will, like I said, be administering the PAST again in March. Some other things that are also on the kind of SEL radar is upcoming. Our registration for the summer responsive classroom courses should open. It typically opens in January. And so there's been, anecdotally, from SEL action team members have heard people express interest and say that with enough time, they might, they would be more able to commit to that four-day. You know, it's a, it's a commitment to go in August, typically when it is. So, but we're hoping to have more, more interest and more participation in those trainings this summer. Sean Amador, who's a licensed social worker and a Hauser parent, is going to be presenting SEL through improv to our sixth graders at Hauser, which is just something she brought to the Hauser admin team and is really excited to do. It's something she has already designed and given to other groups, but it is, I think it's, I can't remember, I don't know if it's 90 minutes or two hours possibly, but aligned to state SEL standards. And then Carrie Goldman, who has presented to our junior high students already, is going to be coming to meet with our elementary staff at February institute day and then present to fourth and fifth grade students in the spring, February, March. That's what I have from the land of SEL.
A lot going on.
Yeah.
I just wanted one clarification. And I know we talked about this when we met in our committee meeting. So the two curricular resources that you're looking to pilot are Fly Five and Second Step. And I just want to clarify that it's Second Step a new, is currently we use Second Step?
Yeah.
And so whenever, I know when you first said that, I was like, why, why would, why would we do that?
Yeah. That was the energy of the room as well when we were like, Second Step is coming. They're like, say more about that.
So I just want to make sure we clarify that it's a whole new.
But it is a new, they, when, when Second Step started their presentation, they said, you know, we've got the established program, the, I can't remember even what the word is. Maybe they said traditional, but the, the one that everyone is familiar with, old. They did not say old, but we heard old. And then this newly updated digital, primarily digital-based resource that has just, yeah, it's been brought up to, brought up to speed a little bit in terms of being more representative of changing student interests, changing student experiences. And there is enough of a, you know, it actually surprised me, the, on the rubric, the max anyone could score is 20 points. Fly Five averaged 18 and Second Step averaged 16 and a half. And the other two programs were like at six and eight, I think.
So it was pretty clear.
So it was really, it was very clear that, you know, there were two different groups after that presentation. And I would say there is a healthy skepticism might be too strong a word, but people are wanting to see if Second Step has changed as much as the presentation made it out to seem. But they were impressed enough with what they heard in that and saw in that presentation to say, let's, let's give it a chance.
For the summer, whatever, I think you said four-day workshop or whatever, is there, are there, are there people we're targeting to go to that? Like, are there a certain type of individual that would go there? And what are the challenges of, are there any challenges we need to help overcome in order to encourage participation?
I think we are, we're, we're opening it to anyone who's, who's interested, you know, it's.
All certified staff.
Yeah, certified staff, excuse me. And I think some of the previous challenges have been just maybe even a lack of, almost like when you guys were talking about the, the conference for next year, these, when the, when this particular training opens up, it is like, start the clock and you have a very limited window of time to decide, can I do it? Can I commit to it? And it's a pretty significant commitment financially too. And so we ask people to be sure that they could do it before it's filled up. And so we have tried to forecast that well in advance so that people can have that in their mind of, okay, I'm going to wait till January maybe to see what my summer's going to look like so that I can get into this training if, you know.
The financial commitment's the district.
Right.
The district pays.
What are we talking about?
Yeah.
So really, it's, so the big thing is just people actually being able to physically attend that?
Yeah. I mean, it really is the, what has helped build excitement for it though is that people who have gone to it and have come back are very enthusiastic about it and reckon, and will say, I know it's a week and I know it's a weekend summer. It has changed how I feel when I walk into the building, you know.
Teachers talk about it as a defining moment.
It really is.
I mean, just listening to you kind of go through it, it sounds like it's pretty powerful. So that's why I was just kind of curious what gets.
Yeah. I think the biggest barrier is just literally just, it's a lot of time and it's.
And we have looked at bringing it to the district. For whatever reason, the organization, you know, I think it probably suits them well that they offer it for the summer workshop. They take teachers in from many, many different districts around the Chicagoland area. They make it very both time and cost prohibitive to bring it into the district. But we, we keep looking at sort of, is there a better way to sort of make this happen? Because, you know, the ideal, the aspiration would be to have all staff, all certified staff participate in something like this.
And they do offer, you know, one to two-day trainings where if, if, you know, if and when we have enough staff who have completed the whole training, it may at some point make sense to bring it in for, bring that one day in just for the staff who haven't participated yet, you know. But it's like you have to kind of reach a critical mass of people who have that foundation without, so that it wouldn't feel like that one day is just kind of a, you know, spending money but not, not really getting about the same value that you put.
And it's not the same as going, but teachers who have been trained now are, is exactly what you explained in the 75-minute professional development, is teachers supporting other teachers to sort of understand and learn and allow some of the strategies really that are behind it.
It doesn't sound like, at least with the IASB thing, it's like, this time every year, I know a year in advance when it's going to be.
Yeah, no, they're not, they're not as.
It's always about the first week in August, you know.
Yeah.
So, but that's a hard week, as you can imagine, for families, teachers to commit to a four-day.
Yeah, because you're probably, what, two, maybe three weeks out of starting school?
And if you, if you're doing summer school, there's some, you know, there's, could be an overlap of that potentially. It's. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Nora.
Thanks.
All right. There's a lot on the education committee agenda this evening. All right, then the next will be facilities.
Nothing today, but next meeting, I think we'll have some more interesting on the bids and where we're at.
Bids for Blight Park.
That's right. The bid opening was Monday or Tuesday? I seem fairly confused on my days this week.
That's why I'm not saying anything because I'm equally not remembering.
So it's happened, but the information will come to all of you at the meeting on the 21st.
Because Remesh will check with the bidders.
The door here, as I, no, wherever that door was I walked through, I was like, this might be one of the last times I see this as it, as it is. Probably be back here at least once before that. I think.
I would think so.
Maybe one of the rotational.
Trying to think.
Yeah, because 10 more meetings.
Yeah, 10 more meetings, so we should be back here at least once.
We'll be here.
Come back in and say goodbye one last time.
Well, that's why I said 10 more meetings.
Yeah.
Might be your last.
But good that you noticed that and thought about it.
Paused for a second, looked around.
All right. Well, then next on the agenda then is personnel committee.
I got another for you tonight, but I guess I'll take a, take Joel's position in here. I might have something next month or the month after that. We'll see, I don't know. Still working on a particular topic that might come to the board table. Not sure if we want to bring it forward or not, so that's why I was kind of being a little bit elusive on it.
We will await developments in the new year. All right, and finance committee, David is out tonight. Let's see Jim. Nothing I assume.
Nothing new there.
Finances are good.
All right. Well, then that would bring us back to public comment. No additional public comment? All right. Let's see, I was gonna, I didn't want to jinx it at the start, but I was wondering if we should set an over/under for this meeting, so.
Eight o'clock on the top, 60 minutes. It's very efficient, Dan.
It does. Unless there are any new several-hour discussions developing.
I mean, I could think of some people who really want to stick around.
They're on the agenda, so.
Not even on the agenda.
It's fair.
We already went past the changes to the agenda part. All right, then next meeting, as was mentioned, is December 21st, regular business meeting 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. The January 4th, 2023 committee of the whole meeting has been canceled. The January 18th regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, going once, going twice. All right, this meeting is adjourned.